We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to Shawnee County Board of Commissioner work session. Our agenda today, we have Gage Park Improvement Authority, and I think we probably have a few questions, but just like to get an update on how things are going, and so who's starting off here?
Good morning, Commissioners, Tim LaRent, Shawnee County Parks and Rec. So we'll try to answer as many questions as you have, as you have, which I don't anticipate this being a terribly long presentation, but based on this slideshow I put together, anyway. Gage Park Improvement Authority update. So we had our first meeting back in December of 2022. I think that was part of the, of this, of what was passed. We had to have a meeting and have some things set up prior to the end of the year last year. So we met on the 22nd, and as part of that, I'm sorry, the 20th of December in 2022. And as part of that meeting, we elected Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, Secretary and Treasurer. So today with me, I have the Chairperson Fred Patton, and I also have the Vice Chairperson Jim Martin. Our Secretary and Treasurer is Tammy Cortez. Also, as part of that meeting, we adopted a set of bylaws. So all of that, I think, had to be done. We completed all of that. And since then, we've met three times, is that right, guys? I think we've had three meetings. In the last meeting, for sure, we spent a lot of time talking about each of the three entities and what their plans are, their future plans for Gage Park. So the Topeka Zoo, the Kansas Children's Discovery Center, and then obviously Shawnee County Parks and Recreation. So as you can see here, the zoo has a preliminary master plan, and we've got one that we're working on. And I think the Discovery Center is also working on a master plan. That's essentially, guys, where we are. We haven't collected any funds yet, as you know. So there's nothing to spend necessarily yet out of the fund. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think the three of us should be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Speaking of the funds, wasn't there a bill over at the State House where they were going to back pay to the first of the year? Did that get vetoed, or is it?
I think, and I can let Fred speak to this if need be, but I think my understanding is that's still in process. Nothing's been approved at this point.
Okay. So yeah, just to add, we've been looking for opportunities to try to fill that first quarter that the Department of Revenue did not implement the sales tax. So we were, we had multiple meetings with them. And at the last minute, we put in a provision for $2 million, which is about what we thought we lost out on. And it did make it through the House and Senate. So the budgets, it's in the budget, and so we're waiting on the governor to determine if she signs that or not.
Okay. I have another question. Will we be paid quarterly, monthly, or?
Go ahead.
Monthly. So once the funds start coming. So April revenues have been collected, obviously, during the month of April. Most retailers don't have to pay that in until the end of the following month. So they'll pay it in at the end of May, I think, May 25th. And revenue, I'm not completely sure. Other people may know more than me, but I think we'll start seeing it a month later, maybe. We did get $6.66 in the account the other day. So Tim wasn't correct. We do have a lot of money now. We're just not sure how to spend it all yet. So I don't know if that's some retailer prepaid. I don't know how that worked, but $6.66.
Betty Greiner, Director of Administrative Services. Yes, he's correct. The retailers have to, for April, the retailers have to file their sales tax for that month by the end of May. The state distributes that money to the different taxing entities by the end of June. They usually send out a notice by email several days before they're actually going to wire that money. Then they will wire it directly into their bank account. So for April, they should get it by the end of June, and just right at the end of June. So there's always a two-month lag.
I have a question about meetings. How often are you going to meet?
Well, that's actually been a point of discussion. We were actually meeting more than we had originally planned. So I think the goal ultimately would be, we'll be meeting monthly, I think, is what we're ramping up to. Because we just felt like, early on in this process, this is new. There's a lot of planning that we think needs to take place. So we didn't feel like meeting quarterly would be enough. When I talked about, and this is kind of why, when I talked about these master plans and what these groups are wanting to accomplish, we really want to make sure that we're working together, and everything that we do benefits each of the three organizations. So when we're talking about funding a master plan, you know, there's that 5% of the funds that don't necessarily go to one organization or the other. We think that there's a chance to fund some of this master plan through that 5%.
So this master plan, you're going to try to conglomerate all, everybody's master plan into one?
I'm not sure that that's actually how that'll play out. I don't know, Jim, if you want to speak to that. But I think what we want to make sure of, and I think Jim will back me up on this, is that whatever we do from a utility and infrastructure standpoint is, does benefit everybody, if that makes sense. That's, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Morning Commissioners. Jim Martin, your appointee to the board, and thank you again for that opportunity. Tim's correct. We've really taken three, I think, constructive actions at this point. One is meeting more often, which the newness of the organization and the expanse that we're supposed to deal with, you know, we felt like it was just extremely important that we meet more often and get this thing off on the right foot. The second is that we discussed the opportunity to potentially cost share between the discretionary allocation that is included in the Gage Park statutory, which allows us to make some decisions on a 5% discretionary fund, actually to do some cost sharing to initiate a master plan type activity. Now, the master plan activity has already been ongoing with Parks and Rec. And so what we've talked about doing is doing a site and utility assessment. Because if you've ever looked at the Gage Park, information that's available is scattered among many different places and in a condition that is not conducive to making sound decisions down the road. So what we're trying to do, and we're working right now on a memorandum of understanding between the Gage Park Improvement Authority and the county to cost share some of the discretionary funds with the Parks and Rec allocation to actually create this site assessment, site and utility assessment, and then combine it with the work that's being done by Parks and Rec. And eventually, our goal is to come out with the master plan for the entire park. As we've talked, the three entities in the park, Discovery Center, the zoo, Conservation Center, and Parks and Rec are all held together by the parkland. So that's where we're trying to focus first, is get the site and infrastructure in tow, and then combine that with the park-type activities, and then include the activities at the zoo from a master planning and the Discovery Center from the master planning. Try to combine all those activities, and eventually go to the public with a master plan within about the next year, if we can. So we're actually undertaking those discussions right now, and I think you'll see something here very quickly. The other thing I will say that we have asked Commissioner Rippon to be our repository for all things historical for this upcoming work at the ripe compensation of $0. So he's accepted that.
Good choice.
No, no, no.
Good choice.
My agreement was zero. But we are active, and within the next meeting or two here, we hope to get the MOU satisfied. And actually, we have had an RFP that we've put together to go out for this. So we feel very strongly that we need to set the base for our future activities and decisions on a little firmer, firmer ground, because I think that's the expectation, you know, that we need to fulfill.
Boy, the benefits of getting older, you know? Be the history guy.
Ma'am, is there any questions that I can answer?
I did have a question. On the, in the bylaws, you guys spell out term limits and things like that, or I'm sure there's a, and then how the finances has had, does each entity do their own accounting, then? Like the zoo, do they, they get their share, and then?
So the law sets forth the term limits for the members of the authority. Each year, we elect new officers, I think. But then however long we serve, well, the appointees for, let's say, Shawnee County Parks and Rec, as long as he has his job, it's him, unless, unless I think he appoints somebody else, is what the law says. And then the zoo director, and then the Discovery Center director. So by law, they serve on there. And then you get two appointees, and the city gets two appointees, and those are, it's set forth in the law. I think they're three-year terms. As for the money, so the percentages automatically go to the three entities. And they, they spend it however they want to in accordance with the law. So yeah, I mean, they would do their own accounting. The 5% that we get, we're kind of taking the approach, it's early on, that we don't want to oversee projects ourselves, or even really directly pay for things ourselves. So talk about this master plan. We had this discussion last month. Our preference would be we do an MOU with whatever entity, Shawnee County, we want to give this portion of the money to, and then you guys oversee this master planning process. Or if we decide we want to do something else in Gage Park with Discovery Center with our 5%, we would enter into an agreement with them. We're going to give you $50,000, and you're going to do X, Y, and Z and report back to us. So we don't really see, we don't have a staff. We don't have a lot of resources. And so instead, we just want to enter into agreements with the three entities to do those types of things. At least, that's where we're at at this point.
I had a question about utilities in Gage Park. As far as paying utilities, would funds be available for utilities? Pay water, electric, or is that?
I don't, I'll just be honest with you, at this point, that's, that's not what we were thinking that we would allocate that money for. It's more for park improvements or improvements to these three entities. But for the daily operations of the park, and I would include utilities and those types of things, that would continue to come out of our, out of our operational budget.
It seemed like we had a few utilities that were, that were, well, I think we had a water line that fed part of the park and the zoo, and I don't know if those are, I suppose it's still that same way. I don't imagine anybody ever changed that, but anyway.
I was just going to comment on, you were asking about the money side of it. And what we've discussed with Parks and Rec is that we will set this money aside in a separate fund, because it is to be used for Gage Park only. And that way, we can easily monitor that it's only being used for Gage Park and for what it's, you know, assigned for. So it won't be mixed in with the general fund or anything like that. It will be set, set aside in a separate fund.
So I guess I'm not super familiar with the way that our utilities bill. But like, does Gage Park get a separate water bill and electric bill from the rest of Parks and Rec? Or do we just get one bill for, for everything we, we have?
Well, I'm not actually sure how the bill comes in, but I know, I know that all of these locations are metered. And so they're all being tracked based on location, and I'm assuming that's how they're paid.
Yes. In fact, when you, you see your voucher report, you'll see a whole list of each utility. That's because they do separate it out by meter and by location. So all of Gage Park could be, you know, identified.
Okay.
And they do that for all of the utilities, for the different places.
I know we haven't been in business long here with this organization, but any projections on how much, how funding will come in yet, or is that still coming?
More than $6.66.
We're hoping, you know.
So all along, we thought we'd get about $8 million a year. I think I, total, total, not, not just, I mean, so the sales tax will bring in $8 million or so. So 5% would go to the authority. So what is that, $400,000? Likely to grow, right? As costs go up, the sales tax collection would increase as well, so.
I think you're on the right track, getting some master planning done. I think that's the first step. You know, where you have three entities out there, all kind of doing their own thing. And they're all growing in some fashion, and it's good to get some direction that way. I know personally, just dealing with the park for years, there were a lot of projects I always wanted to see done. And, you know, you always have more ideas than money in a situation like this. But I always thought we had a, a lack of good identification out there, for one, with our signage. Somebody coming off I-70, driving down Gage, there's nothing there. I mean, there's nothing to say, you've arrived at Gage Park. And, and then, of course, we finally got our trail system in, but it, it still needs more connections to different venues in there. Something I always wanted to see, so a little more, a little more trail action there in the park. But I think overall, it's going to, we're going to see some great improvements from all this. And so I'm excited.
So it seems like, right now, there's a lot of uncertainty. Trying to get the framework in place, the finances squared away, that kind of stuff. Well, so we're not expecting to see any large projects or anything right away, is that?
Yes. Well, first, let me say, I think from a financial standpoint, I think we have everything in place. Once this money starts to come in, we're set up to receive it. And as Betty mentioned, we've made arrangements here in the county and how we're going to handle it and how we're going to track it. So we feel confident that once we start receiving the revenues, we'll be in good shape. But you're right, it's going to take a little time to collect some of those funds. And I know for, and I don't want to speak for the other entities, but for us, for Shawnee County, we've, that's going to be the tricky part. I mean, that's why we want to do the master plan, because we want to make sure that we're approaching this in a, in a, you know, well-thought-out manner. I, I do think, however, that it's important that we try to, I don't want to rush things, but I think it's important that we show, that we, that we start making these improvements as soon as we can. Because the county voted for this, they supported it, and we want to, we want to reward, you know, them. We want to show them that we're taking this seriously, and we're going to make some major improvements.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that the taxpayers have an expectation that there's going to be some monumental improvements to Gage Park. And I guess my next question was, would be in regards to the financing. So the money that comes in for the zoo specifically is, I believe, and this is probably for Fred more than you, but that money is, is really allocated for their, you know, day-to-day budget, right? So, and it is to buy down the city's
Right.
cost share. So I mean, you guys, your money that comes in is going to be spent pretty much in and out, right?
For the most part. We'll still have a million or so a year that we'll use towards master plan projects. So in addition to what we were getting before. So you'll start seeing, I don't, you've heard about the My World project. We're, we're starting the next master plan project. We're fairly along in the design process, the initial design process. And so that will be significant. It will be by far the largest project we've had in zoo history. I don't even know if we can do it all at one time, it'll be so large. But we're going to try to raise $37 million in the next 12 months, and sales tax will be a very small portion of that. But we're hoping to do, continue to do really large projects within the zoo. And this allows us to do a lot of that, so.
Right.
Especially the groundwork. Again, some of the boring stuff, the planning. I mean, who wants to spend money on plans? But you have to do so, to be able to do the fun stuff later on.
And now, Discovery Center's not here, but, I mean, this is, it's a new source of revenue for them, right? So they're, they're currently funded by private donations. Do they have any plans that you're aware of?
Some of these traveling exhibits, you've already seen this year, what they have, Mr. Tiger's Neig-
Daniel Tiger.
Daniel Tiger's Neighborhood. So I think they actually planned on using some of this money for that, and unfortunately, we didn't have the first quarter. I know she's got other traveling exhibits planning to come through. They've got a gigantic climbing structure that's super cool-looking, that they're trying to raise a lot of money for. And then they, at our last meeting, they talked about what their master plan may be facility-wise. And they, if it all works out, they would like to add some more classroom and office space to the north, I think is what she said. Again, very preliminary, but yeah, more, more space, more activities, more things to bring in young people.
That's great. And then, so, I mean, obviously, you guys haven't really received any money outside of the small amount. But it seems like if the governor signs the budget and doesn't veto this line item, and then it sounds like maybe around 1st of July, we'll start seeing actual sales tax revenue coming in. I mean, that's a substantial amount of money coming in all at once without anything designated right now. It's not been allocated. And so, I mean, are you guys hoping to just kind of build up a reserve for now, like a rainy day fund initially?
So we've not had a meeting since it got in the budget. So we've not had that discussion. We were just sitting here, the three of us, which is not a quorum, our majority. We were just talking about that. And yeah, initially, yes, I think we will allow that to build up. I've already reached out to our, our bank and said we need something with FDIC limits beyond the max. And so they're setting up a sweep account for us that we get a little interest on. So when that money does hit, it won't, we'll have it, make sure it's protected and earning a little bit of interest. I do think, well, and I think we've talked about this, even if we only get the $400,000 a year, having the three entities bring ideas to us, like how could, how would you guys like to spend some of that money? Or how would Discovery Center or Zoo? So in addition to planning, you know, the master plan, those types of things, as we build that up, what do the entities need? And, you know, what benefits us all? Or it may not be something that benefits all three, if someone comes in with a good proposal. But thankfully, with this large influx of money, that since it's not sales tax money, we don't have to automatically, I don't think yet, I need to do a little more research, divvy it out percentage-wise. So we're going to have a chunk of money that the groups can bring ideas to us, that we might be able to spend some of it early on. But the rest of it, I do think we let build up for a big project that benefits everyone possibly.
Let me comment there. What we want to try to do, especially with the advanced meeting schedule and some of these ideas, make the authority a little bit more proactive as opposed to just a caretaker, accountant-type thing. You know, we visualize that we can do that, and the members of the board, I think, are very representative of concerns about Gage Park. So I think that's what, that's our hope in the next few months, that we actually become a little bit more proactive of a board in that situation.
And then, I know that you guys are all very involved right now. Tam, it's your job to be involved. And Danae is in the same situation with representing the, but some of you other folks are volunteers on this board. And so at some point, is there talk of hiring an executive director to administer all this?
We've, we've not had that discussion. I know you and I have had that discussion early on. I don't think we're there yet. And that's why, as we're setting things up, and we're hopeful that, again, we don't, we don't do a lot other than hear ideas and decide who to work with to give out money, right? I mean, and so, like, say, back to the master plan. We don't want to oversee the master plan. We'd like to have a voice as the process moves forward, but we prefer the county sign contracts, and the county select vendors, those types of things. And so, so we don't have to do that, since we're all volunteers. Who knows going on? At this point, we're, because Brendan Wiley's not on, on the authority, we're using him as our, I tell him, he's our staff person. He has to send out notices of meetings and those types of things, so we don't violate the Open Meetings Act. But yeah, we'll just see at this point, we don't know.
Okay.
No, I agree. Selfishly speaking, I just, I want to see as much of this money as possible go into Gage Park. So if we can do this without spending money on staff, I think that's, in my opinion, that's, that's better.
I just know at some point, you know, somebody's got to pay the insurance premiums and, you know, do the legal work. And I know Jim's office is happy to do that, but they don't have, they don't have to. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of paperwork and stuff that typically a volunteer board wouldn't necessarily be doing. Luckily, one of them's an attorney, so.
For those who don't know, Gage Park's kind of a unique situation in ownership. Half the park's owned by the city, and half is owned by the county. And so that, that's kind of a good and bad thing. It's kind of a hurdle sometimes, because we are maintaining parts that are the city. We're doing maintenance on a lot of it, and we're using it, and so that's fine. But I could see in the future that, you know, parts of that changing as the zoo expands. They only have really one direction to go. And so that will be interesting to see how that all plays.
Commissioner Mays' comments earlier about expectations, that's what we're trying to do, is kind of wind our way and shape our way to meet the expectations of big things, but then practicality and good decisions. So probably for the next six months here, we're going to be trying to shape that approach, whether it be staff, people, or, you know, how we allocate money, that type of thing. So I think in the next three, six months, we'll be able to report back to you and probably have a little better vision for the future.
Mark is here. What about our, do we know much about the infrastructure for fiber optics and things like that in the park? Is that?
Mark Price, Information Technology, Shawnee County. I've talked with him, and in past, we've talked with different people at Parks and Rec about what the infrastructure is. There, there's quite a bit of infrastructure through Gage Park for fiber. There's definitely some places that need addressed and expanded to. There's other technologies that we're actually, just met with the Chief of Police for Parks and Rec about trying to expand connectivity at the park. Like I say, right now, it's, the main areas are well-covered, well-connected. You know, as these master plans come out, I'll definitely have to get involved with the entities and look at how do we move forward, what, how do we make sure all the new places are covered? You know, as they're doing construction within the park, how do we add additional coverage for places that aren't currently covered? It's something we're having conversations about and is always at the top of our mind when, when anything happens. Anytime, anytime dirt's being turned over, we're looking at and thinking about how, how can we take advantage of that to expand what the county has and meet the county's needs.
One comment I might make about that, too. The, the RFP to move ahead with this master planning, the scope of work, we'll try to take infrastructure, not only your pipe-type infrastructure, but the electronic and security infrastructure into account as we move forward. So there's a number of items that, in the scope of work, that will address some of these widely varied utilities that are out there, or that should be there.
Mr. Cook?
Morning, sir. I was a little bit tardy.
So noted.
As you move forward on the authority, the one concern that I would have is overdevelopment of the park. One of the problems that we often see in Parks and Recreation is trying to add too many amenities. And at some point, you reach a point to where you lose the beauty of the openness of the park. And so that's one concern that I do have. We are so heavy on the east side of the park that there may be a temptation to try to build up the west side of the park, and then we would lose that openness and the beauty of just being able to have some open space in the city. So I just might note that, just as, for the authority, as you develop, because there's going to be needs to, as the zoo would expand, as we relocate, rebuild some of those amenities that we have, renovate, improve amenities. I just would hate us to see us overbuild the west side of the park and then lose the openness, so.
I think those are valid concerns. I think that with the amount of money that we'll bring in annually, I think we're a long way. Selfishly, I wish we were getting double that, you know? Then maybe your concerns would really be a reality right now. But I think as we bring this money in, we've got a lot to do, a lot of improvements to make in our existing facilities. So it'll be a long time, I think, before we've got to worry about the things you're bringing in.
One of the things that is really important to keep in mind here is that the existing Parks and Recreation is actively doing basically park planning for the entire area to really address just, just what you're talking about, because we need to get to really address just, just what you're talking about, because we need to get a handle on the basic utilities and the problems with utilities and everything. But, the park planning aspect, when, when those are brought together, we'll hopefully have a sound basis for doing any type of work, but yet, on the other hand, have the park planning to address the type of concerns that you have.
That, that has been concerned for years with Parks and Rec, because everybody that wants to create some kind of new recreation, they want to be in Gage Park, and you, you have to kind of hold them off, or it'd be, it would be full.
There are a couple of parks within our park system that feel like we may have over-engineered them, over-parked them, over-amenitized, and now they feel very crowded, and so hopefully, we can learn from what we've done in the past and not repeat that.
Well, I think it's, I think you're absolutely right. I think sometimes people overlook the value of green space, that's what you're talking about. I mean, not every square inch of a park has to have something in it. So, we're aware of that, yeah. Good point.
I know we've even taken out a number of streets over the years, just to create more green space, or change the alignment of parking lots, so they're not eating up a big piece of, of green space. Shift them around, turn them to the side, and all of a sudden, you, you gain more green space. And, so, yeah.
You know, right now, I'm, something that I'm excited about is our recreation staff is planning these series of hikes, and, you know, through Dornwood, talk about the old, the ruins of the dairy, and Shawnee Orf, the Trail of the Shawnee Orf, where they're teaching people about nature and, and off our trails. And so, I think we're really trying to make an, well, I don't think, we are making an emphasis to try to do pro, more programs outdoors, more environmental, more educational things to do in nature. And, I like that, so, we're moving in that direction.
Very good. Any other questions?
That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much for
Thank you.
For coming in, and I, I know it's a little early in the process, but maybe later in the year, we'll have you back and get a, get an update on how things are going. But, it's good to know you guys are all organized, put together, and just waiting for something more than six dollars, 30 cents, or whatever, come in. So, so, it's exciting times for Gage Park, and thank you for volunteering your time to do all this. Not you, Tim, you're getting paid. I think we have a really good, good group of people working on this, on this board, and I feel good about that, so. Anyway, thank you very much. I, do we have any public, we don't do any of that, okay. We are going to go back into our meeting, and I'm going to make a, a motion that we go into executive session for evaluations, and I, do we have to cite a time, or?
Well, you
Till noon?
You've previously scheduled department head evaluations. Normally, your rules say you do not do executive sessions. We're not doing one like a normal executive session, but we are going to do department head evaluation. So, if you could also make a motion to waive your organizational rule to allow you to proceed with your evaluations today, I think that would be good.
That is my motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries three to zero.
And I, I believe we're scheduled for 10, 10:30, 11, 11:30, 12, 12:30?
I think, I thought 12 o'clock was the last one.
I think it goes till noon.
I thought you guys were touching on that.
I think
Yeah, we'll need to say when we are trying to complete
Let me look and see what I put on here.
Our session today.
Our last one starts at noon.
Yeah, so.
12:30. That be all right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So, from 10 to 12:30?
Yes. From 10 to 12:30 will be an executive session.
All right. No action.
No action is expected.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rippon, second by Commissioner Cook.
Mace.
Mace, I'm sorry. Looking right at you, called you Cook. Everybody in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries three, zero. Okay. Okay. We are back in session. No action is taken at this time. We're adjourned.